Order of March thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, City Council Meeting.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Aubrey?
Present.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Laquero?
Here.
Councilmember Holland?
Here.
We stand for the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Berry?
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. You have been good to us. We are grateful for those who serve this great city. We thank you for our city manager and his administrative staff that have heavy responsibilities of running the various departments of the city. We thank you for our excellent first responders. We thank you for their respective chiefs. We pray that you continue to keep them safe. We thank you for the elected officials who work tirelessly for the betterment of this city. For tonight, we ask, Father, for wisdom in all discussions and in all decisions. May they be according to your will. And for all that you do, we'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel, approval of the agenda as revised?
Move.
Go ahead.
Move for approval of the agenda?
Support.
Any dissension? The agenda's been approved. Civic announcements. Do we have any civic announcements? I believe we have Kathy Hall. Sorry about that.
Yes, my name is Kathy Hall, eleven forty-one East Milton. I'm here on behalf of Saint Justin Saint Mary Magdalene Church. We're having our semi-annual rummage sale on Friday, April thirteenth, Saturday, April fourteenth, and, I'm sorry, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth of April. They have furniture rooms, clothes, bake sale, and toys, all kinds of things. So, we just want to invite everybody. I left some flyers over there, and they asked if it could be put up on cable.
Okay, I think we can do that.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Just give it to the city manager there and he'll put it on. Thank you. Thank you very much, Kathy. Any other civic announcements from the audience? Elaine Zech, County Commissioner.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I had the pleasure and the opportunity to attend the National Association of Counties Conference last week, and that was the first time I'd been to a county's conference in, I think, fourteen or fifteen years. It actually turned out to be a very positive experience. I heard a wonderful presentation on update on opioid drug, the issue of opioid drugs and the lawsuits, and I had no idea, really, the cost to the public taxpayers when you talk about all of the overdoses, more community emergency response, more prosecutors, medical exams, and so forth, the cost of NarCam. So, you know, there is a lot of action being done in that area. It was a worthwhile conference. I do want to let you know that there's a Healthy Lakes Initiative happening in Oakland County. One of the learning opportunities after the Flint water crisis was not only the water fountains that we purchased, but there is this volunteer organization that is willing to train people to monitor lakes throughout the county. Oakland County will test the larger lakes to ensure water quality, but we have a lot of smaller inland lakes. So, the idea is to train community volunteers that will monitor water quality, and we already have, I think, fifty people that have signed up. I think about fifty people monitoring these smaller lakes. So, I think it's a really wonderful Healthy Lakes Initiative in Oakland County. I had the pleasure of coming to Hazel Park High School last Friday to see the school breakfast program. It's National School Breakfast Month, and I was really impressed by the program, the school, the leadership embracing this. And this is, they've learned how to deliver healthy breakfast to high school students. They have these vending carts, grab-and-go. There used to be problems getting students to school early enough to get breakfast, and they can literally walk in the door, grab some healthy food, and take it to their classrooms. So, there's been a really wonderful, positive, cultural revolution where the teachers allow them to eat at their desks, and the evidence is clear that if students are fed, then they will do better in school. So, I thought it was really wonderful, and I would like to see every school take advantage of this program and do it like Hazel Park is doing. They're really setting model standard. Superintendent Cafeteria, they were super. Finally, there is more local road program money coming, reminding this was something that my caucus led to try and bring some additional resources into the local roads. And, you know, we'll take every dollar we can get. It's matching money that cities have to match, and so now there's another opportunity for additional thirty thousand dollars coming from Oakland County into Hazel Park, and it is in process. I got a, I did a gentle reminder, and I know that we're acting on it here, and it's helped on Woodward Heights, I think, last year.
Woodward Heights, and eventually, if you keep doing the program, it will repay Woodward Heights all the way to Dequinder. So, keep sending us the money.
My goal, it's supposed to sunset this year. Frankly, when we brought it on, we thought it was going to be a year program for a million dollars. So, now we're on, I think, the third year, you know, and this year it's a million and a half. So, I'm certainly going to be pushing so that it doesn't sunset, but I can't.
This is my favorite county program.
Well, you like, you like some other things that help prosecution too, and, you know, so, but we're trying to do whatever we can. So, that's it for this evening. Any questions for me?
I have a question about the water monitoring. How can volunteers get more information and sign up?
I will get that to you. Would you like that information?
I would.
Okay. Send it to you here as a council member?
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, County Commissioner Zech. Any other civic announcements from the audience? From the council civic announcements?
Two civic announcements. The Hazel Park Historical Museum at forty-five East Pearl will be open this Thursday, the fifteenth, from six to eight P.M. And there's another event going on that same evening at the junior high, and that's the Neighborhood Enrichment and, I believe, Youth Assistance Fundraising Chili Cook-Off. So, it's going to be a tough call, but you can, you can come see some old things, go have some hot chili, hope to see a lot of folks out at both. In the museum, last week, we had a member of the Elias family that came in. Also, March twenty-third, fourth, and fifth is Susicle the Musical at Hazel Park High School. The drama club is presenting this. We got a taste of that at the Promise Zone. On Friday, the twenty-third, Neighborhood, excuse me, Hazel Park Community Creative Arts, we got a lot of different groups here, Creative Arts, are hosting a night out, and you can have dinner and the show for fifteen dollars, and the funds go right back into supporting the arts at Hazel Park High School. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone?
Just a reminder that the Hazel Park Arts Council has partnered with the Hazel Park Library Friends for an art show. It is free to the community. It's going to be April twenty-eighth from five to eight P.M. at the Hazel Park District Library. This is, again, a free show, a free art show. The address of the library is one twenty-three East Nine Mile Road.
I have two things. There is, Hazel Park Youth Assistance presents Bullies, Victims, and Bystanders. It's a two-part program. It's a free parenting seminar. It is Wednesday, March twenty-first, seven o'clock P.M., and it's at the Webster Early Childhood Center, four thirty-one West Jarvis. And that's Bullies, Victims, and Bystanders. But there's something, a lot more fun coming up on Thursday of this week, and it's the I Survived Old Man Winter Chili Cook-Off. It's at the Hazel Park Junior High School, and there's going to be, it looks like we've got five, six different groups to, in here with the Hazel Park Firefighters, Neighborhood Enrichments, the School Board, Youth Assistance, Hoover School Staff. There's a White Elephant Table coloring contest, face painting, karaoke, things like that. It's this Thursday at the junior high at five thirty, and there'll probably be bragging rights or something for the, that's chili. Come on out. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other civic announcements? Okay, closes civic announcements to going to public discussion. Any public discussion for the audience? Step up? Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Richard Gage, four-two-five West Nine Mile Road, for my business. You probably, all of you pretty much know me here a little bit. So, an opportunity came up fairly recently, just at the end of the year, for a, came through my studio for a sculpture to let me do what was required with it, and, of course, you know my civic interests and whatnot. So, I put together a program, talked to Ed about finding a location here in the city to put that in, and in working with that, we came up with a location that the artist was pleased to let it go into. So, I have a couple, little bit of description and a map here, and the artist is here if you want to hear some talking about it, and make a decision if this is something you guys all want. So, it's basically a three-dimensional sculpture that is called The Movement of Color, and the location that Ed and I talked about with the artist was kind of outside the south entrance doors, kind of in line with the Veterans Memorial and the library sidewalks right there. So, that's kind of the place. Talked to Corinne at the library. She seems really good with that, as well as the Friends of the Library and Neighborhood Enrichment, who kind of takes care of the other thing. I communicated with them. They seem to have no problem with the location and whatever maintenance or anything that they might do or be required to do. So, I have some paperwork here if anybody wants to read it and answer any questions or if you want to hear from the artist.
Very nice.
Richard, what's the sculptor that, what's the artist?
The artist's name is Mark Belchenko.
Right. I mentioned to you when I saw this, it reminded me of some other artist's piece.
This would be like an Alexander Calder. Let me pass these out, and maybe everybody, I don't know.
I've got one in art, but I want to thank you very much, Richard, for working for not just this one, the other sculpture at the Art Garden down by Dairy Park, finding these sculptures that we can get placed here, because that's one of the things I'd always pictured in founding the, co-founding the Hazel Park Arts Council, was having some sculpture in that area, right at Nine and John R., having some kind of art display right there.
Well, I'm glad you took the time to meet the artist, too. I know you had that opportunity to do that, and, you know, we also have the more to come. I'm sure there's a lot of interest in that. We all are artists or friends of artists or art-sensitive people.
Did you say the artist was here?
The artist is here.
Would he like to come up and?
He probably would, I would imagine, and I think he should.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the mayor and council. It's a very nice gesture.
Well, I want to thank you as well. I'm proud to be a part of the cultural and artistic enhancement of the city. I've got a vested interest. I am at four-two-five West Nine Mile as well, and I've been there for fourteen years, and I've seen the development that the city has gone through, and I think it's terrific, and I want to, I want to be part of it.
Wonderful.
One little side note, if I'm not mistaken, right, this is for sale still.
Is for sale. That's correct. That's right.
It's on display. It's for sale.
If you want to start the bidding now, we can do that.
Thank you, though, Mark. Thank you very much.
It's my pleasure.
Counselperson.
So, it's titled Movement in Color. Does it move?
Yes, it is a kinetic piece. The upper element, are you looking at the image there? The upper element rotates three hundred and sixty degrees, and there's a vertical and horizontal, vertical movement as well. It's got terrific movement. It just takes a slight breeze to rotate the piece, and it's, I'm very proud of it, and I'm happy that it's going to a good home. The city, the piece has been displayed in Sagatuck for about two years, and then following that, it went to Mary Grove College, and it was there for about four years. So, now it's resting in my studio, waiting to come to Hazel Park.
Like to say thank you again.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
So, although you, we jokingly said that it's for sale, and it is, you know, my conversation with the artist is this is really a long-term piece here so that we can really, you know, use it for our community's best advantage. We're not actively trying to pursue that, but I appreciate the sentiment and the joke about that.
Thank you. Counsel, we need to make a motion to adopt this piece.
I don't believe we need to.
I don't think you need to.
We can just administratively have it done. Administatively, say okay. We did talk a little bit last night, though, with the Arts Council, about establishing some policies and guidelines and procedures for folks who want to display art in the future so that we have a chance to make sure that everybody gets a chance to display and make sure the pieces are tasteful, make sure that the pieces are fit in the area where they go, and just make sure we bring some order to the process. But, you know, we can just allow him to do that, and thank you for your donation and loan to the city of Hazel Park.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Any other public comments? Saying no more. Close public discussion. It takes us to the consent agenda. Counsel, I need a motion.
I move approval of items one through six, Mr. Mayor.
I'd actually like to pull item five for discussion.
Okay, do I get a support?
Support.
Any dissension to that? Any discussion?
Sorry, yes, I'd like to pull item five for discussion.
Item five as well. Councilwoman Aubrey also had discussion on this, so we'll go with Councilwoman Holland. Since you opened it up, we'll ask your question first.
Now, as I'm reading this, it's new, so there's no point of reference for what it is. It's going to highlight, this is a media highlighting of what's going on in the city. May or may not cost us sixty-eight hundred dollars?
It may or may not. We don't anticipate that it will. We're going to try to find donors and sponsors for this thing, similar to other things that we've had with respect to the city with ads. I don't know that we're going to be able to get donors to pony up the full sixty-eight, but we do have some money in the budget for advertising, and we do have the millage that we use for publicity and advertising as well, and we can use that to cover these costs. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious what we're planning on promoting or advertising here.
Well, we will not have total editorial control over the articles. What we will be able to do is to kind of suggest and sponsor articles to be written about Hazel Park. The people who write the articles, we checked today because we had a question from Councilwoman Aubrey last night about their ability to maintain their journalistic integrity. They will have final editorial control, but we will be able to suggest stories for publication. And one of the reasons why we want to seek the donations is so it is sponsored by the community and not specifically by the city of Hazel Park. So, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to secure donations for this, but there's no guarantee that we'll be able to.
Okay, sixty-eight hundred is, it doesn't sound like a huge number, but it is, and there's a lot of other programs that need money.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Aubrey, first and second.
So, I had some similar concerns that Councilmember Holland also had regarding the content, but I was also with the sixty-eight hundred dollars. I was a little concerned to receive a proposed contract, but there was no budget included or how those funds would be spent. So, I would appreciate a little bit more financial detail. It says this contract's for four weeks. That breaks out to seventeen hundred dollars a week, and then it's, there's just some items like Facebook Live, some articles. It's unclear if the four, it's unclear how many articles we're going to be getting, so a little bit more detail. I do think it is good to advertise our community. We're often overlooked. We've seen some great articles about the community. I'd like to see that, that go to highlight some of the things that people don't know we have here in Hazel Park. I would be interested to know definitely how the sixty-eight hundred dollars was negotiated. I know this does give the city manager approval to negotiate this contract, so perhaps in those negotiations, we can get some more detail. And it also references a couple times that we can inform editorial content, so I'm just curious about how we inform editorial content, but they, if that is what I'd mentioned with us making suggestions, it does look like there's a lot of meetings and stuff, so it was just a little vague for my preference.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I tell you what, why don't you let me further negotiate with this particular service provider and let us explore how many donations that we can get, and then let me bring it back to you before we put ink on the contract. But I want to, I want you guys to know that we're doing this and that we are participating in this, and I think everybody's raised some good questions, and you've raised some questions that I will go back and ask them, that we may not have thought about to ask, and we'll try to see if we can pin this down a little more and also see how many donations we can get from the community so we're not shouldering this. Again, if businesses want their businesses to be highlighted and things like this, I think they should participate in this project as well, which has a dual purpose of highlighting what's happening in the city of Hazel Park as well as supporting local journalism, which I think we can all agree is something that has died on the vine. So, we're fortunate to have Andy Koslowski and Crystal Proxmire and Mike McConnell, when he's not covering the fifteen other communities that he's required to cover, try to tell our story. And we try to tell our story, too, but sometimes our local stories don't have the same reach. And Metro Mode was very helpful in telling our story when we began the renaissance of this community by highlighting the cool things and opportunities that were existing in Hazel Park. So, I think this whole thing has merit, but I do think that I agree with you that we need to tighten it up a little bit and flesh it out. So, I'm happy to bring you some more information.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do have a quick question.
Yes.
I was under the impression that this is, the sixty-eight hundred was specifically requested for advertising? Is that, or is it a generalized?
This is, it is, it is a generalized thing. It includes some other things. It includes an ad, and it includes some articles and some things like that. So, what we may need to do is to get some more information specifics. Councilmember Holland and Councilmember Aubrey referenced timelines and expectations and things like that. I think we need to pin down from them what we can expect from this, and I think that will also help them and us to get additional support in the community for this. So, I just want to make sure that everybody thinks this is a good idea to pursue before we begin.
Any other quick discussion, questions by the council? Do you want, does the motion maker want to amend the motion to table this item or bring it, or just take it off?
I think the appropriate amended motion would be to approve all the other items on the consent agenda and allow the city manager to negotiate and bring back further information on item five.
I would accept that, move items one through four and item six.
Support.
Okay. Any dissension to that? Saying none. Closes the consent agenda is there, moves us down to the Ministry of Reports. Item one would be special land use requests for two-four-nine-one-eight John R., barber shop, retail, men's store.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have Community Development Director Jeff Campbell here to give you some briefing on this particular information. What we, what is requested before you is a special land use for a barber shop and accessory retail to be located at two-four-nine-one-eight John R. Mr. Campbell.
Good evening, everybody. The Planning Commission held a meeting last Tuesday where the applicant presented his special land use and site plan. The Planning Commission found unanimously that he met the five conditions set forth for a special land use for this site. As you can see, there are, the recommended motion includes basically no parking on the side streets, no cars may be stored overnight outside. If it's required and they need, they're going to start out with three chairs, but they applied with five for the purposes of growth, and if it's determined that they need additional parking, they, as determined by the city administration, they will be required to enter into a parking agreement after it is reviewed by the city attorney. And all, and then some normal stuff, and also, they might, they might have, I was just handed a revised plan, but they might, there's supposed to be a dumpster recycling agreement as well. They don't intend on having a lot of waste, but we want what is there taken care of and recycled. The clothes actually are not going to be delivered to that location. They will be delivered to the house of the applicant, and then he will bring them in without all the waste, but we still want a recyc, a large recycling bin to cover any eventualities. And no sidewalk sales are permitted per the Planning Commission. They didn't want any, as we've experienced on weekends with junk out on the sidewalk.
Okay. Counsel?
I move approval of the special land use request for two-four-nine-one-eight John R., the barber shop, retail, men's store.
I have a support.
Support.
Discussion.
I have discussion.
I have one right here. Sorry. I'll be right with you.
I was just wondering if there were any plans for the existing mural on the building?
I believe they will be changing the one on the side, but they are looking and will consult us later about doing one on the back.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have motion maker amend the motion to make this special land use request specific to this retail establishment only, based upon the fact that if another retail establishment comes into that site, you may need a bigger dumpster.
Yes, I would like to add that, to make it specific to this business.
Specific to this.
Does a, thank you, city.
Does a second.
We'll support.
Okay. Any dissension to this? Any more discussion? Ministry of Report, land use of two-four-nine-one-eight John R. passes. Takes us to the rezoning request for two-two-oh-three-one Dequinder from M-one to L-B-M.
Yes, on February twenty-seventh, the applicant was, his, his request was to change his location, which is the former Derby Bar on Dequinder, from industrial to local business industrial, L-B-M. The applicant basically lost his non-conforming use as a bar after it went vacant for over a year. The previous applicant closed up shop and then took off to, I believe it's Albania with unpaid bills, and then the applicant applied for this in early February for the purposes of establishing retail and/or a medical marijuana provisioning center. And based on the fact that the Planning Commission believed this was spot zoning, there was concerns about if we rezoned this, then we have to rezone everything potentially to L-B-M, and the entire city would be L-B-M. L-B-M, and the entire city would be L-B-M, and the council had already made determinations about where and when the medical marijuana provisioning centers would be located. So based on those factors, they did not meet the twelve standards set forth, thus the council, or I mean, the Planning Commission voted a recommendation of denial of the rezoning on unanimous vote.
Thank you. Do we need a motion from the board?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the applicants are here, they may wish to address the city council.
I was not aware. Okay, I thought this might be one of these two, anyways.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the council, also with Bruce Rosenthal and the applicant himself, Alvin Alchea. I realize in, in looking at, you know, the zoning.
Don't want to, I get an address from your business or whatever you're at?
It's two-two-oh-three-one Dequinder.
I mean, a legal office that we can put on file?
Oh.
Your name and your record, your place.
Robert Ficano. My law firm is Legal Advisor, P-L-L-C, address is nineteen-three-two-one Fitzgerald, Livonia, Michigan.
Thank you very much.
Sure, and if you want, Mr. Rosenthal's.
Bruce Rosenthal, P-thirty-four-two-sixty-one, address is three-three-seven-five-one Heritage Hills, Farmington, Oklahoma.
Thank you very much, now we can proceed.
Yeah, I, we attended the Planning Commission meeting, and realizing with your ordinance and what you're trying to do in the twelve-point plan, I could go through all twelve points, I'm not going to, going to do that with some of the highlights that we thought we met the requirement. Obviously, one, starting with the economic development, realizing that these type of provisioning centers, especially with the state statute that's been passed for medical marijuana provisioning centers, there's a percentage of the revenue that will come back, obviously, to the, to the city for its use, so it's consistent with recent developments of economic development you're trying to do and produce revenue within the community.
Mm-hmm.
Also, a reasonable return on the investment is, was previously stated, this was a bar for a number of years, had been abandoned. At that point, there were unpaid taxes, and plus he absconded with, apparently with some bills that were not paid as well. The applicant has brought all the taxes up to current date, he has refurnished the building, he has put in fencing, he has also put in lots that have about fifty parking spaces be able to accommodate. Also, what's attractive is that there's two places that the building can be entered into, one is for the consumers or people that would go in, the retail customers, the other would be for any type of shipping or anything like that, any truck traffic would be a separate entrance that would be put in there as well. Also, the, some of the other things that easily could be met, like the utilities for the area and things like that, were sufficient. The big issue is, or one of the concerns, and we have some, we have five left, we have passed them all out to the Planning Commission, we can give it to your city manager, is with the, biggest issue you had is the spot zoning, is this spot zoning in terms of how it would be applied? We looked at, and we believe Dequinder in terms of the spirit of what you're trying to do, and I realize your zoning is a little bit different, but Dequinder, if you look at it, is most appropriate for traffic because he has fifty spaces, it would not create the same type of issues that if you were on Nine Mile, that you actually zone for with the traffic flow. It'd probably be a lot less at this particular location with the customers or retail customers that come in. So with the plenty of parking, plus the security that's there with the fencing and, and the rest of it, it is now pretty decent looking in terms of the building and being refurbished and things like that, and as you said, your city attorney, first, the Planning Commission, it was an eyesore previous to this, and there's been a lot of activity on it. The, as I said, all the taxes were paid, fences, security. The other part of it is sometimes there are concerns, there are too much with the activity, with the traffic and things. A, a bar as it previously was, most of its activity probably was from three or four in the afternoon all, all the way up to two in the morning. Dispensaries have very limited hours that they can stay open, both by Michigan law regulations as well as the ordinance that, that you've enacted as well that's part of it. Your, your ordinance, I know, speaks to, and there are six other locations that are retail that are right on Dequinder, that, it sort of begs the question of spot zoning in a way, because you have a pizza place, you have some other type of retail operations that are there, that the traffic goes in and out, and, and is, and this particular building would be consistent with that, as well as you have for the other six businesses that are along Dequinder at this particular time. I know that this is, came as a recommendation from the Planning Commission, we appreciate that, we're asking for consideration or reconsideration of, perhaps in this particular case, of it being allowed to be zoned in that particular area. I don't know if Mr. Rosenthal wants to add anything, but appreciate the reconsideration.
One of the things that we did here when we were sitting through the Planning Commission, there was a great deal of concern about traffic flow, and that was discussed thoroughly on Nine Mile Road. I think with the amount of parking, with the fencing, with it being on Dequinder, we've alleviated a lot of that concern that I, I would hope the city would have. I think we set this establishment up, keeping in mind what the city would like a dispensary or provisioning center to look like as far as security goes, as far as.
Separate.
Entrance and exits go. I think we, and we, we worked hard to put a piece of property back on the live list, if you will, and I think it really fits within the scheme of what we're trying to do. And probably if we were here today, it would have been zoned at our request if we were coming in for a new bar or restaurant or what have you as opposed to industrial. Thank you, I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you. Glad to answer any questions, if not, appreciate your.
I think we're just going to have a little discussion on this and go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Mr. Mayor.
First of all, I'd like to, you know, ask the administration and the attorney where we stand on this particular case.
With regard to, when you guys went through your numerous work-study sessions, you had determined where you wanted the different facilities, which you approved under the Licensing Act, and you specifically did not want dispensaries on Dequinder, you wanted to say that, that what is allowed there is the growing operations, for one, which, you know, those types of properties along Dequinder would be definitely appropriate for that. The applicant has not tried to market this, this piece of property for any other use which is allowed in that zoning district, including a growing operation. So unless you can prove that it cannot be used for any other use that is allowed, a rezoning is inappropriate. Number two, it is spot zoning. Number three, the Planning Commission thought long and hard, it wasn't just based upon the traffic count, although that, the Nine Mile request for rezoning, and as Mr. Campbell stated, every applicant will come in for a rezoning then, in every part of the city, to be able to get a dispensary. You know, you, you've limited them, you, you made more provisions for growing operations, allowed them in a larger zoning district, and to rezone something to continue with proliferation of dispensaries when a growing operation or numerous other uses could be made of that property would be inappropriate.
Administration?
Mr. Mayor, the administration has heard nothing tonight that would cause us to recommend anything other than following the recommendations of the Hazel Park Planning Commission, who, as our city attorney indicated, deliberated long and hard on this issue, gave it some thought, and came to the conclusion that they did not recommend this be approved.
Thank you. City council, I have a motion, please. Then we'll have discussion right after, before the motion's fully.
With a recommendation to deny coming from Planning Commission, what, what would the motion be?
It was denied based upon many factors, number one, that it would be zoning.
Well, I just mean, what would our motion?
That it would be a spot zoning.
To affirm.
Yes, you would, you would affirm the Planning Commission's ruling to deny the zoning?
Based upon the fact that it would be a spot rezoning, that the applicant has not proven that the property cannot be used for any other purposes allowable in that zoning district.
What I mean is, do I make a motion to approve, and then if we want to confirm a Planning Commission, we all vote no, or do I make a motion to deny?
The motion would be to follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission and to deny the applications for rezoning of that parcel.
And then you would vote affirmatively on that motion?
Sorry, I have a diverse background of what that motion's supposed to be, so I'll make sure, so I will make the motion to affirm the Planning Commission recommendation and deny this request.
I have a second.
I will second and support that motion to affirm the Planning Commission's to deny this rezoning request.
Discussion from any council members here on this particular issue, and, or either way, pro or con? Any dissension to this motion? Hearing none, this motion is affirmed. Thank you for your time, gentlemen. Okay, item three, resolution urging DTE to engage in tree trimming in the city of Hazel Park. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I brought this to your attention and to the attention of the Hazel Park City Council, because I think at this time it's important that the governing body go on record and send a strong message to DTE that it is well past time to go out and trim the trees in the city of Hazel Park. So again, I have requested this from DTE every year for, I think, the past three years. We recently had a not-too-big snowstorm with some heavy snow that resulted in power outages across the community, and these power outages are invariably a result of tree limbs and trees that have failed to be properly trimmed coming down on the lines. So I would respectfully request the city council pass this resolution and allow me to attach it to a letter that I will send to DTE, Director of Community and Governmental Affairs, requesting that they please trim the trees in Hazel Park.
Counsel?
I move approval of the resolution.
I would imagine that, oh, sorry, second.
Second.
Discussion.
I would imagine that trimming the trees has got to be cheaper than coming out and fixing the downed power lines.
You'd imagine that, but I don't know that that is the case. I think tree trimming is expensive, and sometimes it's cheaper to just, you know, let it ride and then deal with the aftermath. Of course, the people who are impacted by that are the residents that live here and have to deal with being without power for sometimes two or three days when you have a very minor weather incident like we had a couple of weeks ago. It's, we had a lot, a substantial portion of the city was without power for a significant period of time, and it's almost invariably related to them failing to properly trim the trees.
Councilmember?
I just want to say, I was contacted by a few residents when they saw I posted the agenda online, they are very supportive of this, and definitely encouraging us to pursue this aggressively. I know our neighbors to the north, Madison Heights, had similar problems, and DTE was very resistant, but they were able to eventually prevail. So hopefully, we can, if it requires us bringing them in and sitting them down here and talking to them, then maybe that's what we need to do. But I definitely support this, and I would like to request that we add not just the trees, but make sure that they're trimming the vines that have grown up the poles and are hanging off of these lines as well.
I will add the words trimming of trees and vines.
Any dissensions to that motion? Seeing none, motion passes. Takes us to item four, Resolution A, Resolution in Support of House Bill Fifty-five Forty.
Mr. Mayor, I bring this to your attention at the request of Mayor Pro-Tam Aubrey, who requested that the city of Hazel Park take a look at this. For background purposes, what this is, is a bill that would enable communities who sponsor police officers through the police academy, and currently we hire only academy-trained personnel, but given the difficulty that we are having attracting and finding new quality applicants that want to stay here and be Hazel Park police officers, the option for us to sponsor applicants through the academy is a real possibility in the future. What this piece of legislation will do, and I will leave it to Councilwoman Aubrey to explain it in greater detail, is allow cities who sponsor someone through the academy, if that officer leaves very quickly after hiring on, they could have the officer be required to pay for some of the costs of that training. Councilwoman Aubrey, if you wish to further expand.
So I was really excited when I met Representative Santana when she was advocating for this. This bill has been introduced, it's got support from a dozen-plus members, and a lot of cities are starting to jump on board and show their support, because this, this offers, it not only offers a level of protection for us financially, but it also lets us go into offering to pay for academy training if perhaps you have an individual, they're low income, and they can't afford that upfront cost to go through the academy as well as additional training, and we can provide that service to help somebody realize their dream while protecting us, but also giving, giving them that benefit for people to pursue a career in law enforcement. So I was really excited about this, I brought this here, I'm hoping everyone here will support this resolution. The, the bill is currently in committee, so we just need to get it moving along in the legislature.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Does it guarantee employment if the officer completes the academy and passes everything that you obligated to hire that police officer?
No, but usually if you sponsor someone through, you're already hiring and they attend as an employee, so it's.
I understand, but I want to be sure that there's no guarantees.
But nothing prevents us from discharging a probationary employee for any reason at any time while they're employed by us.
And, and that's not related to the bill? The bill itself just allows us to recoup expenses, but it, it's just, gives us the option.
Yeah.
Or somebody goes through the academy, graduates, and then they don't find a job even though you paid for it, and you reverse it.
No, we would, we would hire them as an employee of the city of Hazel Park with the expectation that after they complete the academy, they would then stay with us and become an officer, and this would be a disincentive if we sponsor them to the academy for them to take their certification and say, hey, guess what, the city of Sterling Heights is hiring tomorrow, and they pay better than Hazel Park, so thanks Hazel Park for all your help and support, but we'll see you later.
It's kind of a common practice in the private sector, because when I was working for different places, they would pay for your insurance right up front the day you start, but if you left within ninety days, you were obligated to pay that back, or within a year.
That's pretty much exactly what this is.
Yeah, it's, it's similar also in the private sector to non, like non-compete.
Right, exactly.
Which I strongly support as well.
And again, no one says that they can't leave, but if they do leave, they're responsible for some of the costs of their training, and that would be assessed back to them on a sliding scale for a period of up to five years. And that is only if we pay for them and sponsor them through.
Motion to approve?
So moved, support.
Dissension, discussion? Motion passes. Takes us to boards and commissions, do we have any? I didn't see none on the, in the packet. If not, moves us down to tabled items, seeing none, new business? Anyone have any new business they want to bring up this evening?
Your Honor, I have several things tonight. First, the cable broadcast, there's an issue with this, the last meeting has, have been running, it only recently aired and was online, and I mean, like, within the last three days maybe, and it's currently not airing live right now. So, you know, we got all this new equipment here, and the cable is still not functioning, and I think we need a sign to let folks know when they come to the podium, they need to talk into the microphone, otherwise you don't hear anything. Second, I have been incredibly patient with our new trash company, and I have come to dread Monday evenings and all day Tuesday and usually Wednesday, when people who are waiting for their garbage to still get picked up are getting ticketed. waiting for their garbage to still get picked up are getting ticketed by code enforcement. This week, I was fortunate enough to come home and find not only someone else's garbage in front of my house and on the street, I found a couple of other cans that didn't belong to me. And this, the previous week, I want to say there were four on my block that they put their stuff out on Sunday night, and it was not collected on Monday at all. It's been inconsistent, and like I said, I'm tired of the phone calls. This needs to be addressed. If they have to have a supervisor driving around, something has got to be done. We shouldn't have to keep calling DPW or GFL Monday night, Tuesday morning, and asking them to do their job. They're getting picked up.
We, last week, I did express to our DPW supervisor to share with them our displeasure. We had one of our police officers, they actually had to stop and pick up a trail of garbage that was left. At this point, they're getting close to being in breach. So, it is, we are going to have to talk with SACRA, and SACRA is going to have to send them a very, and our SACRA rep, Andy's our SACRA rep, so we'll do that.
Tomorrow morning is the SACRA meeting.
Yes, please express to them that they are to let GFL know that if their performance does not improve here, that the city of Hazel Park will find them in breach, and we will be having to take legal action against SACRA if they do not replace them. So, I don't think that they want that. The shortest distance between two points here is for GFL to get their stuff together, and you were kinder than I was, Councilman, you used a substitute word there.
I've only had my garbage not picked up about...
This is, these complaints that we're getting now are real, they're repetitive, they're failing, they have so much more capability than they are showing us here in Hazel Park, and if they cannot do better, it is high time for us to tell them goodbye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If we could get a schedule of when they start and what streets they start on, I'm sure code enforcement would follow them and ticket them every single time that they are not doing it properly. I know that they've done that with our previous trash pickup.
You know what? I actually love that idea. In fact, I love that idea so much that we will start that next week. We will put a code officer out there, and when they leave trash and garbage on the street, we will follow them around and we will ticket them.
Officer Patterson has tracked them down and stopped them and made them go back and pick it up.
Miss, your question, do we need a former motion, letter, resolution, whatever you want, from the council to give them to Councilman Lucero to take tomorrow?
I think Andy knows, I think Andy will handle this tomorrow when he gets there, and he will express that to Jeff McKean in no uncertain terms and to Bob Davis. And we will also express that to their foreman next week when he comes in, that we're almost to the point of initial legal action. We're done. Get it together, if you can't do any better than this, you're done. It will probably take longer than two weeks, I don't want to give anybody any unrealistic expectations.
Congratulations, Pam.
But we will, we will begin the process of dealing with them, and I love the idea of issuing tickets. Again, one of my police officers and the school principal cleaned up garbage.
Please, with the results from Ms. Patterson's...
Well, if I, if we find anything, I'll let you know.
Your Honor.
Pardon me, just for the record, Tom Jones, the alternate, and I both, we spoke with Jeff McKean about it. He's had people out following the trucks and looking into the supervisor and stuff, and tomorrow morning, I will make sure they get a more forceful message as well.
And again, I think we've been very patient. I actually had that written down here, so you actually, you know, stole that from me during my city manager comments, but that's okay, because it really is, they're just not getting it, they're not, they're not performing to expectation, and this is now a matter of supervision of that company, and they need to do better. There's no, there's just no reason, other than sloppy, crappy, bad...
Workmanship.
Performance and workmanship, absolutely.
The cans that I had were from several houses away, so it was special. I had one more item of new business.
Well, just in case you needed new cans, maybe.
I have brand-new ones, like to keep them new. Last thing, we had a presentation and a work study or informational meeting on the budget and the upcoming work-study sessions, and that's all coming, we've got a calendar on that. There's some letters that come down through the state that you can sign up for, and it's specifically the preliminary review of underfunded status and notice of deficiencies. And I'm a little bit concerned about some of the numbers I saw on that, and I'm hoping that maybe by the next formal council meeting, not the second one this month, maybe Lacy could give us an update and a game plan.
We are, and again, I emailed you that today, okay? If you checked your emails, you will see that you got that in your emails. So, this is no surprise here, remember, I've told you this multiple times that this was coming. We are underfunded. I disagree on a policy level with the whole pre-funding of health care. I don't think that is a good use of public monies. The way that they have it set up, it simply ties your hands with your money, and when do you get to use your trust fund? So, that, to me, the way they've got it set up doesn't make a lot of sense. The pension, for the record, we've made every pension contribution that has been requested us of MERS. And for the record, as you all know, we plan to use all of the revenues that we get from medical marijuana to allocate that to pay for pensions and underfunds in our retiree benefit system. So, we have a plan, we will seek a waiver, there are currently no penalties for this. This is simply an advisory thing with the state of Michigan. This was the remnants of that piece of garbage legislation that they attempted to jam through that we were very effectively able to thwart in the last legislative year. So, we're on it, Lacy's currently working on the waiver, and yes, you have, check your emails, it's there.
Thank you. The language was pretty frightening.
It is, but as you can see, we're not alone. There are a sea of communities in the same boat as we are, like Madison Heights and Oak Park and so many other communities across the state of Michigan. Again, for the record, even though it's not yet my time to speak, during my comments, I will say it and get it out of the way, Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken, and this is simply another evidence of that.
Thank you.
Any other counsel? Want to speak for new business? Moves us down to the communications from Department Heads, Chief Story. Would you like to come up, and then we'll ask Police Chief Bukos to make a...
Sorry, I just blocked that on you, Mayor. Evening, Mayor, Council.
Evening.
The DTE issue, I would like to inform you all that we ran on around a dozen runs that day due to tree-related injury or issues, and our fire department was out of power for a day and a half, which we run at a, about a quarter power on a portable generator. So, just for the information for DTE, that will give that some validity. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief Bukos? Okay, thank you very much. Campbell? The attorneys?
Alyssa?
City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I had the great pleasure to attend the annual Promise Zone Race to College Dinner a week or so ago, and I want to thank the residents of Hazel Park for their outstanding support for this great effort. The Promise Zone is one of the things I'm proudest of in my tenure as city manager, that I've had a chance to be part of that amazing organization, which I think does a great job of not only providing college scholarships for our students, but also helping our students that are eligible for external monies to find those monies and to get applied for and attend college and help them to be successful in college throughout their tenure. So, it was a great event. I want to thank the community engagement team for their help and their support during that event, and their assistance, that worked out very well. They were much appreciated, and again, thank you, Hazel Park, for that turnout.
I'd like to say a couple of things on that. I think it was a huge turnout, and it was excellent, probably the best one we've had.
It was the best one.
And I hope the funds were appreciative this time.
A special, huge thank you to Chef James Regato of Maple Gray, who donated all the food. Not only was it the best dinner we've ever had at one of those dinners, he gave it to us, and we made the most money that we've ever made. This is a great event, so I'm just pleased to be there.
If anybody out there, the residents, have children in school that may want to just make a $25 donation a year to the Promise Zone, it every little bit helps, to provide a $2,000 scholarship a year to your child or other children in our community, to be able to offer them a better education after high school, and also maybe alternative education into a trade market.
Absolutely, we were able to highlight the very cool program that we have affiliated with Chrysler and the UAW to train our students in skill trades, and you can see from the participates, participants in that dinner, they love this program, and they're staying in school, they're learning about the work world, they're learning about skills that they could use in the future. What a great program. Huge thank you to Kay LaRoni, who is an all-star, she's our executive director, and wow, does she do a great job, so.
But if you do have an extra 25, who do they send it to?
The Hazel Park Promise Zone, they can go to the website, and they will just Google Hazel Park Promise Zone.
That way, we can all participate in a process of helping our children for the future.
Counsel, I will have a very brief executive session on a lawsuit.
Counsel Member Sullivan.
Want to go the other way, or do you want? No, that's fine. Thank you, everybody, for attending this evening. Thank you to our fire and safety and our police department for their hard work during that last winter sloppy storm that we had. I walk dogs, and it was like being pelted with snowballs from the sky. It was terrifically fun. Thank you all for coming, as always, and my fellow council members, thank you for the discourse that we've had on the dais today. It was very nice to have some good discussion up here. So, thank you all, be safe.
Thank you. Council Member Holland.
Thank you all for coming out tonight, and for those of you able to watch at home, thank you, and hopefully, it's playing back on the city's webpage.
Leland is indicating to me that our equipment is showing that it's on the air.
Okay, it kicked in when Jeff was up there.
So, yeah, he said, "We are on the air," so he just texted me.
All of you who took the time to come out tonight, thank you. Pam, congratulations on the promotion, sanitation engineer supervisor. I wanted to comment on the Promise Zone dinner as well. The two directors of the community creative arts and community engagement team were kind of enlisted to help put this together, because the two women involved are bursting at the seams about to give birth.
Literally.
They were not able to really set the place up. The dinner, it was, it was just a lovely evening, and I wound up taking home a plate of extra brownies, so I was really happy about that. The students that spoke, what outstanding young adults. Three of them I know from the admin building, they're in the Alternative High School, and they're frequent volunteers when we have our monthly food distribution with gleaners. These young adults are overcoming every challenge. College is a dream for many. Graduating from high school may not have happened for them, except they had somebody, be it an administrator, be it a teacher, be it a family member, be it a stranger, somebody gave them the encouragement they needed to find that inner strength and get their diploma and seek a higher education. And the two students that are currently recipients of the Promise Zone dinner, they didn't have an easy road there either. One of the young ladies recently lost a parent and is in the process of losing another, and she's still going to university and has an amazing support network, and a lot of that is the support network that's embedded in the Promise Zone. I'm proud of everybody that spoke, those students were just amazing, and I'm grateful that we have this opportunity for students in the district, and I would encourage everyone to find a way to learn more about it, get involved. It's a, it's a pretty cool program, and I believe I've already said plenty tonight, so thank you all again for coming out, and have a wonderful evening. Safe St. Patrick's Day, one word, uber.
Okay, Council Member Lucero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regardless of the weather forecast, I saw my crocuses coming up out of the ground.
Don't stop believing, Councilman.
I know spring is around the corner, so watch out for the bicyclists, watch out for the kids walking around. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and the dinner was great, for the Promise Zone, and the Promise Zone is an incredibly worthy, worthy program to support. I look forward to supporting it many different ways, it's a great organization, but thank you for coming out, everybody.
Mayor Pro Tem Aubrey.
So, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, it was great. We did have a lively discussion today, it was fantastic. I also want to wish everybody Happy St. Patty's Day this Saturday. I'm Irish, so I'm looking forward to my corned beef and cabbage with my family, it's a great tradition. Like Councilmember Holland said, Uber, Lyft, definitely utilize those services, be safe, don't be stupid, our police cars are not taxicabs. So, and on that note, everyone, have a great day.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening, I think it was a philosophical and very worthwhile discussion up here this evening. I think we all had our input on every subject, and it's worked out to be a great business meeting. I also like to thank that the Promise Zone is probably the one charity that we all in this community have in common. We don't think of anything else but our children, that's what we live for, and I believe wholeheartedly, if we can contribute as much as we can, this program will continue for years to come. And it's been funded privately for a long time, but I think it's time to have a lot of residents, a lot of you, $20, $25, again, that's all it's going to take, and we're not, I'm not up here doing an infomercial, but it's actually what we need to keep this program going. It's a worthwhile program. There's a lot of kids that don't have the opportunities to have an extra $2,000, $3,000 a year to go to college, even to OCC or a community close to us. And it's nice, we have a few graduates that come back and work in our community, work in our city, we have one here, we also have, they come back and volunteer.
A-Rod.
Yeah, they also come back and volunteer in our schools. The stories that you hear, and then some of the stories you don't hear, that I know of, some of the personal experiences, some of the kids, that, you know, my daughters told me about in the past, when she graduated, some of the children that come back, they went to school, they had rough family lives as well. And not everybody has the white picket fence around the house with the great parents and everything either, you know, everybody's got their own situation to deal with, and it's how you deal with it and the support you get along the way, and how it makes you the person you are, whether you be young or old. But being a young person, it's a challenge sometimes. But thank you again. Executive session motion, please?
Before we do that, can I make a recommendation that maybe Mayor Webb introduces his new family member?
Thank you, me too, what?
Would you bring the new family member up? I, we can't leave him at home because he's so young. Set him on the edge there. We'll just see if he wakes up, if he wakes up.
Hi, Cooper.
This is Cooper, seven-week-old beagle. We've called him Mini Cooper as well.
Lively meeting.
He's, this is not him at home, trust me. He's been a holy terror. Oh, he's been the typical hound.
Congratulations, son.
Thank you, thank you. We decided to start over after eighteen years, twenty, twenty years now.
That's crazy.
Well, thank you again, I appreciate it, and I could get a motion to go to exec session for legal.
Make the motion and move to executive session.
Support.
Okay, and if anyone wants to wait around, we'll be back probably in twenty minutes or so after we get an update on our legal situations. Thank you.